All right, I'd like to call the selectmen's meeting to order at 6:08 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Teresa A. Morse, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, present.
And Veronica Kell, present. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being paid recorded. And it's live on Channel 9, and it will be posted after the fact on the town YouTube channel. For chairman's additions and deletions, I have a couple here. The 6:05 meeting with Cemetery Parks and the Friends of the Bandstand will not be held today. Instead, we'll have a report from them on July 5. I would also like to delete from section let me hang on one second. From Section 3.2.3, Fire Department Volunteer Personnel to delete Brian Bornham as an auxiliary volunteer. So those are the two things I'd like to delete. I have no additions. Does anybody else have any additions? Chaz, or Teresa, or Eric?
Nobody, no.
Yeah.
No, thanks for me, Chairman.
Thank you, Teresa. All right, then, at this point, let's go to the public comment period. Does anybody have a public comment? All right, here are none. I'm going to move on to Section 1.6. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for March 15, 2022?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March 15, 2022.
And is there a second?
I second.
Teresa, I don't know if you're aware, but what I sent out yesterday, we re-sent today because
Yes, I saw that. I saw that, Madam Chair.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. I would like to make one note that there was a piece on Page 1 that hung over into the minutes from I used the March 30th minutes and did cut and paste. So I have to fix that. I did fix it on my computer. So you, Chaz, since you took my copy of the minutes when you came in, you might have to correct. Anybody else probably has a blank Page 2. That Page 2 should not be there. So it's transitioned from my working on pages and transferring it to Word. So I apologize for that. But anything else? So I will fix that.
And the page numbering needs to be fixed as well.
And the page numbering, right. When I remove that, the page numbering will be one. Yeah. Anything else? Okay, so I fixed Page 2. I will remove Page 2. And when I do that, page numbering is automatic. All right. If there's nothing else to change, could I have a motion, please? I mean, not a motion. We need a roll call vote. So Teresa. How do you vote?
This is Teresa A. Morse. I abstain, as I was not a member of that meeting.
Okay, thank you, Chaz.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. All right, thank you very much. 2.1 has been deleted. However, I was wondering if I could get a motion for a proclamation that has come in?
Madam Chair, I move that we move the proclamation from the announcements to replace where we were at at 2.1, if so desired.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. This is a proclamation that was in the announcements and communications, but we we have a I guess I think it would be best to do it upfront. So we have a motion and a second to move the proclamation. Could I have a vote on that? Roll call.
Teresa A. Morse, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. So Chaz, could you read the proclamation for us?
I would be delighted to. Proclamation, whereas Mary Rose West was born in Lexington, Massachusetts, on June 30, 1922. When not climbing trees and doing unladylike adventures, Mary played the harmonica in the elementary school band led by Edwin S. West. Whereas Mary Rose West attended Concord Academy. After graduation, Mary was enrolled in Ashley Hall, a finishing school, to shape Mary into a lady. She attended Tufts University to become a nursery school and kindergarten teacher. Whereas Mary Rose West worked at Raytheon during World War II as a file clerk. Whereas Mary Rose West and Edwin West married in 1948 and moved to Townsend in 1950. Whereas Mary Rose West was instrumental in organizing the first kindergarten in Townsend, the Townsend Cooperative Kindergarten at the Townsend Congregational Church. Whereas Mary Rose West was very active in community affairs. Mary and Edwin West were the backbone of the Townsend Historical Society and members of the Townsend Congregational Church and Townsend Couples Club. Whereas Mary Rose West was very involved in civic duty and volunteered as an election worker and to visit and shop for senior citizens and volunteered to deliver meals on wheels. She was also a Girl Scout leader. Whereas Mary Rose West was exemplified, has exemplified her stance in 72 years of living in Townsend, thus bringing her to this day of her 100th birthday. Now, therefore, we, Veronica Kell, Charles Sexton-Duranian, and Teresa Morse, selectmen of the Town of Townsend, Middlesex County, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, hereby proclaim Thursday, June 30, 2022, as Mary Rose West Day. On behalf of the Town of Townsend, the Board of Selectmen extend their best wishes to you on the occasion of your 100th birthday. Signed this day, June 23, 2022, by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I was wondering if we could have Harrison put that up in news and also put it on the calendar. And maybe we can make a scan of this proclamation and put it up as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service.
And when Teresa comes in, she can say. All right. I should announce at this point that we do have two timed hearings tonight, two appointments. One of them is at 7 o'clock with Callie Huff, and the other is at 7:30 with both MJS Metals, followed by MDC Management Company doing business as McDonald's. So we're gonna go forward with the appointment section of the appointments of officials and personnel section of the agenda, and then come back to those two. So moving on to Section 3.1. In this section, we are appointing the members of the Police Department for a one-year term to expire June 30, 2023, as listed below. Can I get a motion to bundle items 3.1 through 3.16 to appoint? Should that be through 3.17?
No, 3.16. 3.1?
I think, yes, it should be through 3.17.
Okay, I can make a motion that we bundle items 3.1 to 3.17 for appointment of police officers?
As listed in the agenda.
As listed in the agenda.
All right, thank you, Teresa. Is there a second?
I second that.
Is there any further discussion? We bundled 3.11 through 3.17. All right. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Teresa A. Morse, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. All right, at this point, I would like a motion to take item 3.6 out of order.
I'll make a motion to take item 3.6 out of order.
A second.
Could I have a roll call vote? And I should ask, any discussion before we move on? Okay, roll call vote.
Teresa A. Morse, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. So could I have a motion to appoint Shayna Apple as an on-call firefighter?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Teresa A. Morse, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. All right, moving on to 3.2, the members of the Fire Department for a one-year term to expire June 30, 2023, as listed below. Can I get a motion to bundle items 3.2.1 through 3.2.3?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to bundle, oh, sorry.
To bundle items 3.2.1, 3.2.3, to appoint members of the Fire Department as listed in the agenda.
I'll make a motion to bundle 3.2.1 through 3.2.3 to appoint members of the Fire Department as listed in the agenda.
My second.
All right, any discussion? Is there a roll call vote, Teresa?
Teresa A. Morse, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. All right. Moving on to Section 3.3. Can I get a motion to bundle items 3.3.1 through 3.3.7 to reappoint board and committee members as listed in the agenda? So these are all active members of their committees that are being reappointed. Yeah.
I move that we bundle 3.3.1 to 3.3.7, as listed on the agenda.
Is there a second? I will second that motion. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Teresa, are you there?
It looks like she's trying to speak, but maybe losing her.
We can't hear you, Teresa. We might be losing you.
Second, I'm sorry. A second. Yeah, I'm going in and out, but I'll be, I'm almost there.
What we need right now is a roll call vote for the
Oh, yeah. Okay, Teresa A. Morse, that was the bundle, right? The last bundle, I heard most of it. Teresa A. Morse, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. All right, moving on to 3.4.
Yes, question. Did I miss something? Was there a change of status in there, too?
I don't think so.
3.1?
3.3.1? This was the this was the one that we did to move 3.6 up?
Gotcha.
Okay, so are you good?
Yeah.
All right, and we appointed her as an on-call firefighter. She had been a volunteer.
Yeah.
We just took it out of order, so that when we did the reappointments, we were reappointing her as she was.
Okay, I just want to make sure we got everything here.
Okay. All right, so now we're 3.4. These are the Building Department appointments for the inspectors and the alternate inspectors. So can I get a motion to bundle items 3.4.1 through 3.4.8 to appoint members of the Building Department as listed in the agenda?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on means? These appointments are through June 30, 2025.
Effective?
Today, well.
July.
July 1st for the fiscal year, yeah. So Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morse, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. All right, now we get to the ones that we're taking one at a time. 3.5 is to appoint Pat Genolo to the Conservation Commission. Is there a motion? And this is for the term, if you look in the there are two terms, there's a one-year appointment and there is a three-year appointment. So this would be a motion to appoint Pat Genolo to the Conservation Commission for the three-year appointment to expire 2025.
I'll make a motion to put Pat Genolo to the three-year appointment on the Conservation Committee expiring 2025.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, roll call vote, Teresa.
Teresa A. Morse, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. Thank you and welcome, Patricia. We're gonna skip over 3.7. Callie's here with us, but we have that for 7 o'clock. Moving to 3.8. Is there a motion to nominate John King as Townsend Inspector of Animals for a term to expire? Hang on a minute. Shouldn't have these blowing right away. I think they're one-year appointments and they have to expire on April 1st.
April 30, 2023.
Oh, I see, for the year ending April 30, 2023. Okay, so it is a one-year. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, is it John King? The first name again?
To nominate.
Yeah, okay, make a motion to nominate John King as an animal inspector for a term ending April 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'm just curious about the position. It's not about who's holding it, but is this an animal inspector? They do, like, proactive examination of any animals in the town? Like, any farm animals or stuff? Or is it, if something's been called into question? Do you know?
Okay, well.
It's an inspector of animals as opposed to animal control, which means that he would be looking at livestock. He would be looking at their living conditions, the condition of the farm, that kind of stuff.
I think he also
But it isn't that they're always, they're called, like, they're only called in if something, somebody reports it, right? They're proactive in this position, right?
No.
No, they're not.
My understanding is that they go and visit all the farms and count the animals at every farm every year. That's my understanding, not just if something is being called in. So
Okay, thank you.
That's the, there's a barn book.
There is a barn book.
And I think somehow there's tax, this goes somehow with taxing, if I understand this right. Laurie, do you know more about this?
It feels like it should be a very old book.
I think it is. Anyway. All right. So that's what it is.
Okay. I'm ready to vote, Teresa.
All right, roll call votes them, Teresa?
Teresa A. Morse, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. All right. 3.9. This is a reappointment of Joan Watzkowitz to the Wild and Scenic Stewardship Council for the Nishwasth, Nashua, Swanefook, and Nishwasth Rivers. We also need an alternate person. And I know we posted for that, and I don't think we've gotten any response to that yet. But Joan is, this is a reappointment to the Wild and Scenic Stewardship Council for the towns in Townsend. Every town that's part of, that one of these rivers runs through, has a person appointed and an alternate appointed to the council. So is there a motion?
Chaz, can you do that one for me, please?
Totally. I'm making a motion to reappoint Joan Watzkowitz to the NS and Wild and Scenic Stewardship Council, since I really didn't say that well last year.
All right, any further conversation? Or discussion? All right, roll call vote, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morse, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. If there's anyone interested in being the alternate for the Stewardship Council, that would be great. All right, 3.10. This is appointment of town personnel. And this is to appoint Ryan LaPierre as the Chief Treatment Plant Operator effective July 1, 2022. Is there a motion?
I'll make an appointment to appoint John, was it Brian LaPierre, to the Treatment Plant Operator? To, an appointment? Sorry, I lost the date.
Effective July 1, 2022.
July 1, 2022.
Now second that.
All right, is there any discussion?
This was what we had talked about before when we were talking about job descriptions. We said that one, we were going to, they were going to fill immediately, which is this position, from what I understand.
This, yeah, this is the new position that they're going to fill, the new position.
That they need to have that in place because of state regs.
Yes.
And I'm confused about the second one, so I'll wait until we talk about the second one, sure.
I have the same question. So, all right, the appointment of Ryan LaPierre as Chief Water Treatment Plant Operator? Roll call vote, I suppose. There's no other discussion. So Teresa?
Teresa A. Morse, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes.
Congratulations, Ryan, and thank you very much for stepping up and wanting to be able to fill this new position.
I will second one. All right, 3.11 is for the appointment of the Distribution Foreman. Can we discuss that first? I thought that wasn't being appointed until the fall. I don't have a problem with the appointment, only with the effective.
Yeah, no, this is the one that we approved the job description, and there's no change from the foreman to the district, to the distribution foreman. But the foreman job that previously existed is going away. It's being retitled as a distribution foreman with different job duties, but at the same salary.
It is at the same salary.
As the foreman's position was beforehand.
Okay.
So it's, this is effective just a substitution. This is not the new, the new position we are contemplating was another water treatment officer.
Okay, I see.
Right. Which is a different pay scale.
Which is a different pay scale and is the one that they're talking about doing during the fiscal year.
Gotcha.
Okay, all right.
Can we put in the motion that this is a change of title only, or something?
So it wasn't just a change of title. It was a change of title and the job description was rewritten because of some new duties that were coming on board. And I think that they, frankly, I think that Dave took the opportunity to redo the job description. So it's not just a change of title, but it is not a salary bump from what the foreman was. They're
The foreman position stays at the same salary. For this person, it is a promotion.
Yes, it's a promotion for the person who's gonna get it, but on the Water Department budget, the foreman and the distribution foreman is a latter.
Is a latter.
Okay.
That's okay.
So is there a motion to appoint Kevin Keith as Distribution Foreman effective July 1, 2022?
So move.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All right, Teresa, roll call vote, please.
Teresa A. Morse, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. All right. The next is 3.12, to appoint Edward Bowes as a part-time van driver for the Townsend Senior Center, which I assume is effective immediately.
So he can complete his paperwork.
Right.
So is that contingent upon?
Yeah, I think we discussed it before. You don't have to say that. All the appointments are contingent on them doing according to
Part of the personnel. All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Edward Bowes to driver for the Senior Center.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Teresa A. Morse, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. And our last appointment is a motion to appoint Joanne Bronkarma to the Council on Aging for a term to expire June 30, 2024. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? There is a form and the appointment letter and all that. And she's filling out a date and time. Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morse, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell. All right. Moving on to meeting business for my question. So our first is 4.1, a review and approve any municipal real transfers. Were there any, Eric? I didn't see them.
There were, and I forgot to put them into the shared notes.
I was very excited not to see any in there.
Alas.
I know.
Alas. So if the, if the I can, I can get these printed out and provide them. If you wanna skip over this one and take it later on the agenda, I can, I can provide it.
I'm good with that. Do we need a motion to do that?
We can just vote motion table it.
All right, we'll motion table till later. Okay, you're making that motion.
Yes, I am.
And I am seconding it. All right, Teresa looks like she just went away.
Yeah, she's.
Okay, so let's vote to table till later.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. All right. The four point two is to discuss the potential constable policy. We did receive another application for appointment for constable from a person who is not currently a constable, so it's not a reappointment. And I I had talked with Chief Sartal about constables before we appointed a meeting or two ago. And he had said, go ahead and reappoint anybody that is currently a constable for three years, but we should work on a constable policy. So I'm wondering how the board feels. Should he said he would work with me on a policy and then we'll bring it forward to you? Or with Eric or with Sabrina or whomever. He'll work with the selectmen's office on a policy for constables. So what I'd like to do before we make another appointment, because we do have, I guess we have four constables right now, one of whom expires at the end of June and did not request reappointment. So that leaves three constables right now that are currently appointed.
And that's how we usually have, we have three, right?
Usually we we've had four. So I am I'm good with staying with three, getting the policy in place and then considering the appointment.
Well, can we get a letter out to the applicant to let them know that we're going to need to revise a policy or however you want to word that to people?
Oh, if that's what the board desire, sure.
I think it would be.
What do you think of that, Eric?
I think that makes sense.
Okay. Applicants have. We'll revise and just notifying him that we're revising or creating, really. And we will look at the application after that. I don't know if there's anything time sensitive.
Well, considering we've been pretty efficient with our policies thus far, I think we should continue on with that.
Okay. All right, so are we offered with that? Do we need a motion to do that? Or can we just go with what we have?
Well, Madam Chair, you are the liaison. Do you feel comfortable working with the chief on that?
Sure.
Okay. I don't have.
Yeah, they don't, but then they require some motion.
All right, I see. All right, the next one is the first reading of the vehicle use policy. Are we ready for that? Is that in the sharepoint?
So that had been the 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 last time we spoke, the board had requested that I send that to the department heads and received some feedback from them. So there I'm still waiting for feedback from a couple of departments who haven't gotten back to me. And so I would request that we push this over until the fifth.
Even if it's just a first reading?
Or we could just do a first reading. I just didn't want to make radical changes and then I said redo a first reading, but I I I mean, whatever the rule of the board is.
I think we should hold the first reading for July 5th so that or July 5th so that we can get the changes. And that makes sense.
Then I will I will make sure that I get those by the end of the week so I can get them into the the proposed concerns on the table so that the board can take a look at some of the concerns.
Okay, because the policy number needs to be changed on this.
Oh, maybe on all of them because they're 23.
That's yeah, I just in general, can we talk about like all of them in general right now? I think the policy number needs to be changed, and I think that we need to come up with an agreement on the mastheads for these because they're all different.
Well, the ARCA ones, I thought were all the same. Correct? So Wendy's actually, I see what you're saying as far as policy numbers go.
Yeah, we need to make sure that the policy numbers are correct and just the headers.
Has to be.
It has to be all the same, I think.
One certified, one was left justified. Which policies are you looking at? Let's look at these all as a whole then. I don't have anything in vehicle use. Let me look at emergency funds. So just looking at the policy, which is the middle one in there. Oh, it doesn't have a header on it. The header didn't get placed on that.
Well, if you look at the emergency assistance funds policy, everything is centered. These are just different, so we just need to agree upon it.
And what I'm not wearing.
And then this the allocations, these are it's not all lined up.
Oh, so it's a formatting thing.
Well, it's, yeah.
We need to agree on it.
We need to agree on the format.
I like the right justify. What do you guys like?
I like the third one.
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the one that we had been doing for.
So we could show that to and and just get it done that way. That doesn't affect the content of the policies.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll write justify the headers.
Yeah. And the policy numbers we need to agree upon too. Now, we talked about it in the last meeting.
Well, these are all going to be 2023 policies till they're actually approved.
Right.
So I think we can say leave the policy numbers exactly as they are and just change it to 2023.
We want to start again with one, right?
Yeah.
Twenty twenty three, one, two, three, four, right?
Well, yeah, okay. Because they're going to be 2023. All right, I see what you're saying.
So it would be oh, one for vehicle. What was vehicle?
Oh, two, because we had we did another we did the towns and first policies.
Okay. So we're going with 2023s here.
So oh, one, 2023.
Is vehicle use. Oh, two, oh, three and oh, four are the ARCA's and they're 2023s. And we'll change that. And then oh, five is the emergency assistance files.
And then oh, six will be the.
Uh, social media.
Yes, and oh, seven will be the constable.
Correct.
That's why I wanted to get that straightened out. Coming out of the gate hot with policies on it.
Yeah.
We told Teresa she's going to get a warm up her pen, so.
Okay, so just looking at what we have here, vehicle use is one. And the uh, emergency assistance is five.
Yeah.
The funds expenditure is two. Allocation and reallocation is three, sub recipients is four.
Right.
Five works emergency, so six is social media. And seven is constable. Okay.
No.
Yeah, you you said six for constable, but it can't be because six is social media.
Six is social media, seven for constable. Did I say that wrong?
Yeah.
All right. All right, so we're good. So vehicle use will go to July 5th. And Eric, will you show us what?
My goal my goal will be to get you, if there's any specific language that's of concern, in time to take a look at it before the.
The step.
Yeah, I'll just send you the.
Okay.
The language that's of concern, I just don't know.
Okay. All right. So should I do a read first reading of the policy? I was just going to read the policies for the first reading, not the attachments, the interview sheet or the letter. Is that okay with everybody?
I'm okay with that.
All right, so under emergency assistance funds policy, and I'm reading what's in the sharepoint here. All right, so I'm just going to read it. The town for the purpose, the town holds, should I start at the very beginning with the title? Townsend Emergency Assistance Funds Policy. Purpose, the town holds several several trust funds, the proceeds of which are to aid the towns needy. Residents facing financial hardship may apply to the town for assistance from such emergency assistance funds, formerly termed worthy funds. Requests for assistance shall be administered in accordance with the administration process outlined here. Administration process number one. Applicants are referred to the emergency assistance program pop by the community services coordinator or other public entity. Number two, the community services coordinator, known as signee by the community services coordinator from the Abram S branch committee will conduct an application interview with said resident. A, this should be completed either in person with the applicant or over the phone. Those conducting the assistance fund interview should complete the form during the interview. And B, during the interview, as much information as possible is selected to help build the narrative for the applicant's name. Number C, the completed interview sheet is submitted to the community services coordinator. Step three, applicants will receive a hard copy of the emergency assistance funding request form following the application interview. A, applicants need to provide all the information listed on their request. B, all material should be submitted to the community services coordinator. And C, the community services coordinator will create a file for the applicant, including all material. Number four, after the applicant file has been completed, an emergency assistance program meeting will be coordinated by the community services coordinator and the applicant. Request will be reviewed, discussed and put to a vote. This meeting must include A, one member of the board of selectmen, B, one member of the Abram S branch funding committee, C, the town administrator or a designated, probably the community services coordinator, but you can decide. D, if this committee approves the request by majority vote in full or in part, it shall identify the fund from which the disbursement will be made, and it shall cause a warrant to be processed for payment. Number five, the community services coordinator will complete the warrant and submit it to the accountant's office. A, the town accountant will need in the warrant an original copy of the bill to be paid out to the applicant. And B, the community services coordinator will receive a copy of the bill and sign the warrant to complete the submission process. Six, once the warrant has been processed, the community services coordinator will perform perform a follow up with the other. And that is the policy. So first reading, any comments?
Under purpose, if you cannot vote for a draft.
Yeah. We can fix that when we get the header.
Right. Get outside of that and hopefully we have no issues.
So are you guys good just not this is not policy, this is more form? Under where we sign, are you good being centered for the signatures as opposed to left justified or right justified?
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay, all right, so the signature part is fine. All right. Any other comments on the? I'm looking at this and it has accountant's office. Should I and submit it to the town accountant? Should I change accountant's office to town accountant?
No, I actually think it's probably better to leave accountant's office because Lee is going to be in the office more frequently than the town accountant is.
Oh, I see it's it's the capitalization that's the issue. Okay. I'm leaving it. Maybe I'll make it to the town accountant's office so that it can be capitalized over now. Anything else? All right, so can we consider this the first reading?
Consider this the first reading.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Uh, yes.
Um, should you have something in your policy regarding what happens to a person if no money is available? You know, if they're put on a waiting list or will be put off to someone else or something like that?
There isn't anything like that in the current policy. Which is why there isn't anything like that in this policy. I think that if there are no monies available, we'll deal with that at the time.
Well, part of the Andrea, part of the community services coordinator's position is to be able to find or to seek all of the available services for the individuals. So I would say that that's part of what they would be doing for that position anyway, but.
Yeah, it might not be.
Okay, that's fine.
So I I don't think, thank you, though.
Yeah.
All right, so first reading complete. We can put the date on there. Uh, this needs a first reading down at the bottom. We need to put a first reading date and a second reading date on the bottom for this. So it's not on there. But it is on, oh, yes, it is. I'm sorry, I didn't go down far enough. Sorry. Thank you. Okay.
Sabrina's being very quiet over there.
It is on there. I just didn't roll down far enough. All right, so thank you, let's go to the next one then. The emergency funds expenditure, this one.
Purple.
ARCA. This one. The ARCA funds expenditure. Yeah. So we have five minutes. Let's take this one because this one isn't particularly wrong. And then we'll go to our seventh option. So this is, so we're looking at four point five, the first reading of the ARCA funds expenditure policy. I'll just go ahead and read. ARCA funds expenditure policy purpose to to define the process for extending designated ARCA funds, meaning those funds with a defined ARCA project number. And then it says policy extending ARCA fund. Um, extending ARCA funds. The purpose of this policy is to find the process for extending designated ARCA fund. Let me just check something.
Is that redundant?
Yeah, it is. I left that in. I did read that in. Okay. All right, so I think I should take those out, those two. But I'm going to continue reading. The board of selectmen shall notify the entity department or organization by email using the ARCA project notification form of the project number associated with an ARCA project which funds have been allocated by the board of selectmen and the general expected use of the funds. Second bullet, the entity department or organization shall provide to the board of selectmen within 30 days from notification and for each fiscal year during which funds will be extended, an expected project expenditure outline. The expected product project expenditure outline shall include this expected date and timeline, the vendors and amounts, and a description of the products for which the fund shall be used. Third bullet, once the expected project outline has been approved by the board of selectmen, the board of selectmen will notify the town accountant of the expected expenditure funds for the ARCA project. The entity or department or organization will provide the town accountant with the invoice for the approved project when the expenditures have been made. And the town accountant shall place the invoice for drawdown of Arca funds for the designated project on the warrant for the P O S to sign. So once we have a project, we'll give them the project notification form and what we expect it to be used for. They can fill this out for, they're giving us a timeline of when they expect to do that. And then we'll have a record of what's happening so that we can compare to that when the invoice is coming. They will turn the invoice into the accountant, but it's the Board of Selectmen who signs off on the use of the fund.
Can we, can we, can I suggest a formatting thing? Instead of bullets, use one, two, and then those three dashes should be A, B, and C, just so it matches up to the other policy formats? And the same on three, A, B, and C.
Alright, so those are formatting changes. Not content.
Correct.
Anything else? Alright. So that would be then our first reading of the expenditure kinds. Alright, with that, I think we're gonna stop here. For a moment, and back up to section three point three point seven. To discuss and the human resources manager position with Kelly. So Kelly, if you'd like to come up and join us, something that would be wearing.
I actually think we thought we were doing Kelly a favor by putting her at seven o'clock. So we wouldn't, we would be able to take her out of order and pull her up the agenda, but it's
This works, well, this is fine, I learned a lot.
You can pull a chair right up.
So should we do this like a firing range?
I just wanna say welcome, and I'm Veronica Cowan, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Chad Sexton-Geranian, I'm the vice chair.
And Teresa, Anne Moss, I am the clerk.
And you've already met Eric and Sabrina. I'm gonna turn over to Eric.
Sure, I, I, I wanted to let the board know, I did interview Kelly last week. She has, as you can see from the resumes that I forwarded to everyone, she has an impressive resume with a history in banking, but overseeing a lot of human resources functions. In the bank, during the interview, we fleshed out a lot of the work that she's done in kind of personnel development and overseeing H R. I think she would be a huge asset to the town, not only because of her kind of experience, but also she's a town resident. She lives just on the other side of the church. Therefore can walk to the office in the morning.
No, it's not.
Could. Yes, yeah, yeah. So.
Master key then, right?
Yeah, I, I do, I do believe that her experience is the kind of experience that would be really useful in doing what I think the town is gonna have to do, which is basically recreate the H R manager, the manager position out of the bits and pieces that have kind of been scattered around the building. We've already talked a lot during the interview about the kind of things that I think would be really helpful, but I, I did want her to come in and meet the board and obviously if you had any specific questions about her background or things that you would like to know about, about how she views H R or ideas that you would have about things that would be easy for the town, I definitely think it was appropriate for the board to have a chance to have a conversation.
I'll go to you guys first.
I was impressed by your resume, I saw it when it first came in, especially the honors and awards that you have. I like you being upfront about your hiatus and the reason for your hiatus, it was like, we didn't have to look for why that was there. Maybe have to skip to the rest of it. The one piece I wasn't quite clear on, in these roles that you had, these former appointments that you had, what was the latest one you have? Well, I know you've been taking care of your mother and your daughter, so that's been your primary, but how have you been staying up to focus with things like unconscious bias and all those presumes that are out there now?
Well, oddly enough, although I haven't been working, I was a member of several organizations and associations and and indebted, as I'm sure you are as well, with newsletters and so forth, and I still actually read them. So I, I feel like I have maintained, you know, good understanding of H R policies and employment laws and so forth that would apply. I have not, however, worked for a municipality before, so that would be something for me to learn, but I'm a very quick learner and excited about about the opportunity to maybe give back to the community and it would be a great fit for me personally, as I care for a young child and my mother, as you know from the letter of interest. And my daughter said to me the other day, Mom, it's pretty sad that you're fifty and you haven't worked, you know? So she, she actually hasn't seen me in action, so I would like for this to be the kind of work that she, she sees me doing, doing something that is maybe more beneficial for the community in which we live and something for her to emulate.
Can I do, just do one more?
Go for it.
Can you tell me what your, I see here that you would chair, chair of the Power Change Committee, what was that? Can you explain to me a little bit about what the focus of that was?
Yeah. Well, in many organizations, I've been somewhat of a change agent, and the Power of Change Committee was one in which we, we took people from different areas of the institution, brought them together. We had kind of think tanks and came up with more reward mechanisms, way to generate ideas and better interest, cross-departmental training, things like that. That would proliferate some change in a more friendly way, there was some territorialism in that particular institution, and so that was one of the ways that we were able to address some of that. And so it was really just to give everybody a voice and to reward them for contributing and having their ideas and hearing them and acknowledging them and putting them into action, of course.
Lot of stickies on the wall.
Oh, yes, yes, yep. Thank you very much, the stickies.
I, I too was very impressed with your resume, I was actually happy to see it come across my desk. Having said that, the, I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of the scope of things, which I'm sure Eric has, has kind of touched upon. We're in desperate need of diversity, inclusion training, a lot of facets of what this position is, it's gonna be created from archival, dust off the books that don't exist, kind of thing. And I just want to make sure that you're up for that challenge, because it is going to be a challenge. I also want to say that, you know, we have gone through some major changes over the last year here in Town Hall. And we have put the right people in the right places, kind of thing, and this would be part of the cherry on the sundae kind of thing that we've been looking for. So as far as what I see with the, the development and then working with the town administrator, my concern was, was equal to Teresa's, is have you been keeping up with what has been going on in the field? Number one. And number two is you're gonna have to put on a training hat, because municipal H R is much different than, than what it is in the
Right.
the real world they tell.
I've already been looking at the M M A sites and, yeah, I've done some research already, but yes, I understand that that is an upward hill, but I have my boots on, ready to climb.
Alright.
And, and I will say that he was very open with how much work was ahead of me and, and you know, where we would have to start and, and all the things that we would have to develop, so yes, I am aware of, of the workload.
Alright, Madam Chair?
Passing on to me. Alright, I guess for me, you worked in the banking industry, I never worked in the banking industry, so I guess my question is, were the employees unionized? No, no, we have a combination of union and non-union employees, and I know Eric's gonna be pulling the pieces that got handed out for H R back in to one place, but one of the things that I think, and this is a, it's a paper pencil kind of thing, but maybe talking to people too, is getting the personnel policies and procedures updated, because what we have was written before we really had a lot of union employees in place. And so that really, I, I mean, I can't tell you how many times over the past two years, I've said this needs to be a change in the personnel policy and procedure. We need to update the personnel policies and procedures to reflect that. So that's kind of the written piece of the job to let's get things done, you know, so that it's active, not oh, this applies to this person, but not to that person, and maybe it doesn't apply to anybody, we don't really know. So there's a lot to do.
Yes, we discussed that.
And it is a thirty hour week position, not, not a forty, which might be good.
I'll probably work forty anyway, but.
But, anyway. So there's that, so that was one of my things. My, my other part of it is the confidentiality side of everything, that then you probably dealt with that in the work that you did with them.
Absolutely.
So that was my other concern.
In banking in general, there's a whole lot of confidentiality, as I'm sure you can imagine, but in particular in, in human resources, yes, of course, number one.
And and the other is location, where would the desk be? And then if there's a confidential piece of it, what do we do about that? So that's something that Eric will look at, I'm sure.
Didn't have some strong locks.
Yeah.
Con of silent.
Yeah, so I, I, I think Kelly can tell you, we talked for a really long time about the challenges, because I did want everybody to come in with their eyes open. But I, I do think based on my interview with her, and I hope you guys get a feel for it, she's up for the task and feels like she's got the right experience, so that she's not gonna be starting off at ground zero and trying to learn it all, which is what, what my real fear was, that we were gonna get a rookie. And, but we, someone with this kind of experience, it's transferable skills, I think, and we'll, we'll make sure that you know, municipal training is a priority upfront, we're gonna, you know, to try to, to get Kelly into any kind of seminars or conferences to, to get her on her feet with municipal H R and then as you say, there's so many things that need to get done kind of yesterday with respect to this position, I, I, I do think, I think we got lucky to have such a qualified applicant, so I would one of the, one of my goals was the, for to have the Board of Selectmen go to a point Kelly's office, though, as the H R manager.
So is there a motion? Do we have term, or is it just?
Just an employee.
I'll make it a motion that we appoint Kelly to the position of H R manager for the town of Townsend.
The second time.
Any further discussion? Just a thank you from me. But I have a, a, well, we don't need to do roll call.
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Sexton-Geranian, yeah.
And Veronica Cowan, yeah. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you.
You'll meet with Eric and Sabrina and figure out all the pre-employment things and a start date. We're excited to have you.
Yes, the last time Sabrina's willing to do this.
Sabrina, if you could get me an onboarding form, so at least I can get the, the computer stuff started and then.
Doing the rest of your meeting.
Thank you very much, Kelly. We will be reaching out. We're gonna pass around the municipal fund transfer.
Oh, good, okay, should we do that now before we move on?
Yeah, we have fifteen minutes before the next.
Yeah.
So, only one of these needs to get signed, but I wanted everybody to have a copy of it before we.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so we're going back to four point one, review and approve municipal relief transfers. So, Eric, do you wanna?
Sure, so one of these is something that the board should already have been anticipating, we were talking about trying to cobble together the funds to make sure that we had enough to cover the melance and contract that runs through the end of settling the fiscal year. And so that's the thirty-five thousand dollars. And in talking with Lori, you know, this is not a definite amount, this is just a cap. So it may be coming less than this, and we're kind of trying to monitor how realistically, how close we're getting to that. To that, but I, I, I'm hoping that there's gonna be some, some savings for free cash out of that thirty-five thousand amount. The second amount was something we were going, Lori and I were going to the budget, this is very preemptive. This is, the, the facilities accounts are one of the accounts that we identified that is going, gonna begin to the negative by the end of the fiscal year, so this is just a kind of a preemptive transfer to go into, to, to cover any overage of facilities. This is an access, so I anticipate a large percentage of this ten thousand dollars will end up in free cash. But rather than do multiple transfers, we identified a source of funds that we could cover any overage facilities. And, and quite frankly, there are some some projects, some emergencies that have come up since I've been on board that I would rather have taken care of in this fiscal year rather than kick it off until next fiscal year, because then that would just put the facilities budget behind a ball in F Y twenty-three, when if we can get the parts and do the work in F Y twenty-two. I think the elevator is one, and the, the this is something that I'm quite frankly, I already told Rob to do, which we could add to the generator, we had a problem with the generator at some large station. And that's not something that we can let sit for three weeks until we got to F Y twenty-three money. So I, I instructed Rob just to take care of it, and the anticipation was that we would make a municipal transfer before the end of the year. So that would be it for facilities, that's not gonna be it for the municipal transfers.
That's what I wanted to know, because I thought this was.
Can we, the, the email that Sabrina has graciously sent out in regards to the facilities projects, can we get as many of those off that?
That's the goal.
To cover for this?
That's the goal, is to, is to, is to knock out as many of those projects to F Y twenty-two money as possible.
I would like to see that as our most dipping into the.
So one of the ones that, that came up is the, that's gonna be done before then, just to use the, is the sign. The word sign is gonna be done, but I also think that the, I, I'd like to have Rob get the steps out in front of the rec center done, because there was a hope that he was gonna be able to use some savings from the, the roof project to do it, but we wouldn't be, Terry basically said you can't, because the warrant was too narrowly tailored. And we'd have to, you know, have the warrant revised to add, and that wouldn't be into the fall, so I'm gonna try to get him to do as many of those things.
Both of those projects are going in front of the Historic District Commission as well.
The, the sign has already been approved by the Historic District Commission, and the steps, I, I don't know if it's going yet, but I do know that they had to, to take a look at it. To, we, we weren't sure whether or not he was gonna be able to do that, it's just weird. But yeah, that's the goal, is to knock off as many projects as possible.
Alright, so is there a motion to approve the two municipal relief transfers?
Make a motion that we approve the two.
Make a motion that we approve the two end year municipal release programs for a total of forty five thousand dollars?
In a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Teresa Amos, yes.
Just Sexton Iranian, yes.
And Veronica Cowell, yes.
So in, in follow up to kind of your question, I mean, we were working with Lori, these are the, these are the issues that we identified upfront.
These are the big ones.
These are the big ones. Hoping that, that, you know, we'll get, there's going to be a bunch of encumbrances, but I'm hoping that we can minimize the amount of transfers before the end of the year. But she's keeping an eye on it. And we're going to try to do them kind of as they come up rather than dumping a whole bunch at the very end of. So the last, the last, the, the fifth is going to be the last meeting that the board will have for the end of the year. So over the next couple of weeks, before, before the fifteenth.
You have two weeks or something. Right, okay.
The fiscal year has to be wrapped up by the fifteenth. So we have a couple of weeks and we'll hopefully be able to nail down any, anything by the fifth. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, the Finance Committee is meeting on Thursday. So if you get these into our mailbox by Thursday, we can sign them and have them back.
Heading right down there, Angela.
Thank you.
Not on there before the end of the day.
All right. So now we're going on to, oh, let's see, are we all set with that, Eric, then? Yes, we. All right. So the next policy is the funds allocation and reallocation policy, the policy number O three, one three, twenty three. So I will say before I even start reading, that I will change the bullets to one, two, three, four, and five. All right. So ARPA funds allocation, reallocation policy. This is our first reading. Purpose, the purpose of this policy is to define the process for allocating and reallocating ARPA funds prior to the ARPA project final allocation deadline of December thirty first, twenty twenty four. The Board of Selectmen shall approve and allocate funding for all ARPA, I'm going to make allocate lowercase, and allocate funding for all ARPA projects by a majority vote of the board. Such votes be taken at a public open session of the select board. Number two. Surplus funds that were previously allocated by the select board for an ARPA project can be reallocated or repurposed to a different or new ARPA project by another majority vote of the select board. See treasurable treasury allowable uses list attachment two of the policy. And we are, I will tell you that we are working on getting this together. It isn't twenty two pages. Number three, departments slash organizations shall make requests for allocation or reallocation of ARPA funds to the select board through the town administrator. And ARPA funds application form shall be completed for each request for fund. Number four, departments slash organizations shall notify the town administrator when an ARPA project has been fully completed and all funds associated with the project have been fully extended. The town administrator shall inform the select board of all such project completion slash closeouts. And number five, the town accountant shall provide the town administrator and select board with quarterly reports on all ARPA expenditures. Anything we want to change on? So then, first reading complete.
Can I make one grammatical thing?
Yes.
It appears as though in the first bullet, the A, the first A in approved is bolded?
Oh, yes.
I saw you, I saw the allocate, but also the A in approved is bolded.
All right, no, I didn't. Thank you. All right. Any further, anything further? All right. So this one is good to go. First reading will be the second reading on July fifth, and hopefully we'll have all the headers and I'll have all the All right, moving on to four point seven. The ARPA sub recipient funding policy. This is four point seven. On debt business policy, oh, four, twenty twenty three. Just like justify. I, I have a question. This is kind of off the beaten path kind of question. Eric, this is more for you than anything else. Should we do? What happens?
Oh, no, it came back.
All that, ARPA. Should we be using select board instead of board of selectmen? I've been using board of selectmen because our charter does not change. Our, our new charter changes it to select board. But we are still under the old charter, yet MMA adopted select board. Maybe almost two years ago. What do we do about this? Because that last policy sets select board for everything. But the one before has board of selectmen, and eventually we will be a select board. So should we start in these twenty twenty three policies using select board?
So, so I think the technical answer is you're not the select board until the charter change goes through. The charter lists this body as the board of selectmen, and until the charter says it's the select board, you are the board of select. That being said, select board and board of selectmen are oftentimes used interchangeably in news stories and media, and quite frankly, in town hall. I don't think there's any risk of confusion if you put the select board instead of the board of selectmen. I think that there's, but that technically speaking, I believe that you're currently the board of selectmen.
I'm just wondering for consistency purposes, if you look at the funds extended to policy, the first one that we read, it says board of selectmen. Should I make it select board?
It's really, so it's, it's really up to the board. The, the legislature has not passed our charter yet. And so we are the board of, you, you, you three are the board of select. Um, I, I, I think if you, if the board says we're going to refer to ourselves as the select board, starting in FY twenty three, you could certainly.
I think we should, because the charter.
And that way we win the charter changes.
Well, had we not had such problems getting the charter to the state to begin with, we wouldn't be having this discussion right now. But outside of that, I think that we have been kind of flip flopping between board of selectmen and, and select board. And in the sake of consistency, which is my same argument with the email signatures on people. I think everybody in town should have the same email signature on it, much like the same, you know, letterheads and all of that kind of stuff.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to change in the policy, in these policies, the twenty twenty three policy. I'm going to make it select board. Okay. All right. Do we have time before seven thirty for me to do?
There we go.
Minutes.
This is a, this is a longer policy. But yes, the answer, I guess the question would be, you could ask if folks have any changes preliminarily, even if they don't, then you could read through it. I'm sure you could read through this in four minutes.
All right. Are there any changes?
I did not see any.
I don't have to remember anything.
Your bullets are off.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and read. ARPA sub recipient funding policy. The American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA has allocated state and local fiscal recovery fund, SLFRF, which is why you're thinking from DLS. This is an aside that I sent you, Eric, says C R L, the C L R L F, which is different from S L F R F.
Right.
So I'm not sure what that's talking about. To the town of Townsend, the ARPA program under the U.S. Treasury's final rule details allowable uses of the SLFRF funds and specific guidelines. It is the responsibility of the town of Townsend to ensure these allowable uses and guidelines are met by both the town and those organizations receiving SLFRF funds from the discussed city, unchanging city to town everywhere. This was the city of Lynn, but this was from. Your organization has been classified as a sub recipient under ARPA. A sub recipient is an entity that has received a sub award from the town to implement a program on behalf of the town of Townsend for a legitimate public purpose. Sub recipients are allowed to determine who is eligible to receive federal assistance and has the responsibility for programmatic decision making. Sub recipients may have its performance measured in relation to other objectives of the ARPA program and towns and tent of the funding remand is responsible for adherence to applicable federal program requirements specified in the original award and are required to perform a single audit. The full guidelines, is that true? I thought single audits were only for seven hundred fifty thousand or more. The full guidelines are in the compliance, and I guess it is true, are in the compliance and reporting guidance, state and local fiscal recovery fund attached by six seven A. It is the goal of the town of Townsend to ensure the ARPA guidance from the federal government is strictly adhered to. In ensuring compliance with these reporting requirements, your organization serves as the first line of defense against fraud, waste, and abuse of federal money. In fact, the federal guidance not only requires strict oversight of sub recipient agreements, but specifically mentions sub recipients' commitment to acting as a gatekeeper to potential fraud and waste. Your organization is required to complete the town of Townsend sub recipient agreement form, which is attachment of one of the policies. In addition, that's an assign. In addition to the federal guidance requirements, your organization's responsibilities will be subject to the rules and requirements of the uniform administrative requirements, cost principles, and audit requirements for federal awards under two CFR part two hundred and shall include one. In short, ARPA funds are used in accordance with eligible, eligible uses as outlined in the U.S. Treasury Secretary's interim final rule effective May seventeenth, twenty twenty one, and final rule effective April first, twenty twenty two. Compliance and reporting guidance, which defines eighty three allowable spending categories, and maintain adequate documentation of each expenditure. Number two, implementation of effective internal controls to ensure overall compliance and ensure clear and concise record keeping procedures for direct and indirect costs are in place. Number three, ensure record keeping and documentation procedures are in place on all beneficiaries. Number four, maintain records and all financial information for a period of five years after the funds have been expended or returned to the federal treasury and making such records available upon request by an authorized agent. Number five, implement, adopt, and report all internal controls to document all SLFRF funds received from the town. Number six, if your organization extends seven hundred fifty thousand or more, submit to an audit and do the single audit act under two hundred CFR part two hundred. Oh, yes, I do. Thank you. Number seven, ensure your organization has adopted Executive Order one three nine five, advanced racial equity and supports for underserved communities through the federal government, January twenty 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 one. O N B memorandum M twenty one twenty, promoting public trust in the federal government through effective implementation of the American Rescue Plan Act and stewardship of the taxpayer resources, March nineteen, twenty twenty one. Executive Order M twenty twenty one, implementation guidance for supplemental funding provided in response to the coronavirus disease, COVID nineteen, April tenth, twenty nineteen. All legal requirements relating to nondiscrimination and nondiscriminatory use of federal funds, ensuring your organization does not deny awarding a benefit or service on the basis of color, race, religion, national origin, limited English proficiency, disability, sex, gender identity, or sexual orientation. Number eight, your organization is required to cooperate with the town of Townsend, town administrator, board of selectmen, and change the select board, town accountant, and any other agent of this, of the town. The town of Townsend may request detailed expenditure or other financial information from your organization for compliance and recording requirement. Your organization is required to provide the requested information in a timely manner, even after your award term may have lapsed. The town may also request detailed information about the structure, objectives, and other information about your organization. So this is, where I see this right now being used is some of the wellness programming. And also, T E O, funding the funds that we've approved. And right now, I think those are the only two. Pardon me?
For the walk in cooler there.
Yeah. So that's where, right now, the supply, if other things are requested, this could, but it's for things like that, that this.
When I did a search on a SharePoint site, the, basically, this policy came up, but it was the template we used for the city of Lynn?
Yes, that's correct.
What, is there a reason we're keeping it on that, on the site, on the SharePoint?
Because it was used in the, in the meeting. I don't know where on the SharePoint site we found it, but it would definitely be in the SharePoint for the meeting where we originally.
I just have found it under correspondence when I did the search. So, okay.
Usually what we do to, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you on.
It, it's applicable to the meeting where we first discussed.
Right. So, and that's, that's what I was going to say when we did, when we had the vehicle use policy, we had three different towns, vehicle use policies, and we loaded it in SharePoint in that meeting.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. All right. So we're good. First reading for that. And the, the application form for the sub recipient is in the SharePoint. All right. So with that, it is now seven thirty four, and we have a hearing for MJS Metals, followed by a hearing for the company doing business at the bank. So. Yes. All right. So. I, but this is just for, this is a, this is just for a license. It's different, a hearing, it's not just for, you know, where things have to be noticed or anything like that.
This is a hearing for a license, a public hearing, so the, the public may just say. Okay. You, you had some, at some point in time, you should open up the hearing for any who are in favor or any who are in opposition.
All right.
At some, just at some point during the hearing for their comments.
So are you, Carl?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Come on up to the table. It's more because of the, the AL than anything else. People.
You can pull the chair, pull the chairs up.
Yes, pull the chair up. All right. So I, I'd like to open the hearing for an application for license for MJS Metals. The purpose of the license is to obtain a junk collector's license to collect junk, old metals, and secondhand articles. The business is at sixty turn high ground. In the town. And this is the license that has been held in the past, correct?
Since nineteen eighty three. I believe.
And I assume it didn't get renewed in a timely manner? Is that correct?
I, I never get the renewals.
You don't get the renewals?
I do not.
Is it because of address or?
I don't know. I usually, this is a chase that I have to do every year.
Oh, that shouldn't be.
That shouldn't be the case at all.
So I see Sabrina over there writing quickly.
That's why I'm here.
That's why I'm here, but I've been involved with a number of these transactions. For sixty turn pipe road. It, it's, it's an historic situation. Come to expect this.
That you have to come in to reapply every time?
Yeah, yeah, I never get a renewal.
Is that because of the type of license or is it because we?
Well, I was told.
Have the correct address?
No, no, I, I was told that at one point that it's the only license issued by the town that removes on May first. Every other one renews on a calendar year.
Yeah.
And it just gets forgotten.
Can we make a change on that to make it renew with everything else?
I, I asked that and I was told that for some reason it can't.
Is it a state required?
The only reason why it would be that it wouldn't be able to be renewed is if the state says the junk license expires, expires maybe.
Cause it's a state that sets when the common vidlers expire and everything.
One of those things that I guess gets forgotten.
It's kind of like the inspector of animals that is March every year we're supposed to be and we always miss it, but just why?
And is it an annual renewal?
It is.
Who takes care of all of the other annual renewals?
That is an excellent question. I, I, so I, I, I think, I think that that, that those, that the renewals, there's certain renewals that fall into the purview of the Board of Health. So the food renewals. Food permits would fall into the Board of Health. And the, the, the Board of Selectmen acting as the License Commission is jurisdiction of our other ones, used cars, new car sales. Common vidlers and junk licenses. And so alcohol licenses, those, those, and, and so I, I'm assuming Sabrina, as you know or knew, I think that that function probably rests in the Board of Selectmen's office to do those renewals.
Okay.
And so it seems like it should be possible for us to make sure that gets sent out before May. Maybe we could just send it with all the rest of them in November and you can get it in early and.
That would be fine. That might be the best.
You just get it early and then it's done early and then.
And would wait to six months to.
It would expire until until May of the following year and.
Yeah, as long as you get it, that's the important thing.
Yeah.
I think.
Well, I have to say I'm a frequent visitor. And the nicest people ever, you want to laugh though, and I drive up my minivan, they weigh it going in, and I'm like, don't eat. The way you go out, and then you can, it's the best deal ever, I mean. I can't say enough about how well run it is and how nice the people are.
This annual event occurs.
So. I guess all we need to do is move to approve it with any condition. I think the prior condition, I'm, I'm looking at the old license, I think everybody has that.
That.
Yeah.
Over the years, that, that's been the practice and over the years, under a different zoning bylaw. The conditions were mirrored in a special permit. So I think that has something to do with.
With what's here?
Well, how the conditions were both tracked and now it's simply this annual renewal of the quote unquote class three junk.
So is there any objections for us to keep the conditions the way they are? No.
So it's the special conditions of the license that I have here are scrap metal and other outside storage material must be completely screened from view from any street or adjacent property. And then number two, hours of operation are seven AM, five thirty PM, that's still the page. And sign to conform with zoning bylaws. Signage, I assume that's what, signage to confirm with zone bylaws. That's what I have. Were there others that?
I think year by year going back, we'll see those erupted days.
Alright, so is there a motion to up?
Appreciate you opening it up to the public.
Oh, right. Are there any comment? Thank you. Are there any comments from the public?
In favor?
In favor of the MJS Metals license?
Yes.
Alright, so Laurie is in favor. Teresa made a comment in favor. Any others?
Well, the only other comment I do want to make is I do really want to encourage people to use it. We talk about recycle, renew or whatever. And it's the easiest way you can get rid of a joke in your yard without throwing it over. You know, avoid paying for a dumpster, I'm not going to get rid of it, so I encourage people to take advantage of it.
Alright. Any, any comments opposed to the license?
Nothing on Board Manager.
I don't see anything, so. Alright, so with that, is there? Am I right?
Public hearing is now closed.
The public hearing is now closed.
Water is in charge.
I make the motion that we approve the license for MJS Metals.
Second.
Through for, for the maybe granted and able to take, take effect of May.
Yeah, I would just say through May of twenty twenty three.
Through May of twenty twenty.
Of twenty twenty three and that they get to renew before May of twenty twenty three.
Alright, so a motion to renew, is there a second?
Second.
Any further comment from the board? Alright, others in favor?
Teresa A. Marsh, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. So.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna stop coming next week.
We'll see you in April or May.
Alright.
Probably not, that's some.
Okay, thank you very much. It is now seven thirty five and I would like to open the hearing for MBS?
MDC.
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 Management.
Why is it? Up because here. MDC Management Company doing business at McDonald's restaurant. So David G., are you present?
Yes, I am.
Alright.
Now, I can see you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see your name. Oh, there it is. Okay, now I have your name. Alright, thank you. The purpose of this hearing is to obtain a common vidler for the purpose of preparing and serving food and beverages to the public. And the location is twenty Main Street in Townsend. And I believe that this is a license that has, we have, you've had for a while now, correct?
That is correct. I've, I've had it personally for over five years right now.
And it, it did not get renewed this year because the renewal did not reach you, is that correct?
That is correct. I had the same issue as the previous company. I'm not get, yeah, I'm not getting the common vic on a timely manner.
Okay, so we'll, we'll see that those get delivered.
Yes.
So do we send those out certified? Should we send them out certified?
I don't think it's required, just an unrenewal application certified. And just because of the cost and, you know, in a town like Townsend, it's not huge, but across the state, common vic licenses are, there's a lot of them. So it's not a requirement if the I, I would suggest, let's see if we can put a procedure in place. Talk with Sabrina and, and making sure that the, the, the office has a, a process in place right?
Yes. Okay.
Those that aren't renewed.
Recording ones to actually get sent out, they're making sure that we can track it.
Alright, so we will do that. So, just looking at this. I don't know that it's. So comments, Teresa or Chad? I have nothing. This was Sabrina checked for completeness, correct? So the the application is complete. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor? Open for public comments, Harrison.
I am a very frequent flyer. Harrison would be brokenhearted if he was not there. He's not just a employee, he's also a client.
Yeah, we have, we have many people in that town that, that enjoy the food at McDonald's.
Alright. Anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Alright, hearing none. Is there a motion? To grant a common vidler's license to D B A Management Company? MDC Management Company doing business at McDonald's restaurant?
So moved?
No, second.
Any further comment?
Signature cover sheet. Maybe some motion.
So we will sign the license after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, so a motion to approve and to sign outside of the meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve and assign outside the meeting.
Second down.
All those in favor?
Teresa A. Marsh, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. Thank you, Sabrina, for noting that. Thank you for coming in.
Alright, well, thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
On, I believe with social media. I'm pushing the rest of the air.
Right. First reading of the social media policy? And was that in the SharePoint?
That was not, and the reason why, so I, I've had conversations in meetings with a couple of different departments who run their own Facebook pages. And there are some concerns with the policy and specifically about the restriction of putting non government things on Facebook. So I met with the recreation committee this morning. They had some concerns because they regularly promote the soccer leagues and the, the other nonprofit. You know, recreation facilities and they kind of, it's a, it's a two way street. They help promote a town some rec. And so they were, they asked me to try to get some guidance on that from a town council and so as part of my, our meeting with Adam this, this week. I'm going to ask him those questions about specifically going back to the idea about requiring municipalities to have, to have equal time. If you let somebody, one non-public entity on. You have to let everybody on. And whether or not there's any way that we can through, i- i- is there any way to get around that or is there any way that other municipalities have thought to kind of to structure that between the library, the senior center and the recreation department, they're very concerned about the idea that we, they would be restricted from, from putting any content that wasn't specifically government content on, on there because they, they do promote a lot of non-government items.
So maybe we can, I guess this is just a question, can they be unofficial pages? That are just with those departments? And then we have an official Facebook page that is more town hall based.
We can certainly do that, but those departments are still public pages. Run by town departments and they're still, so if a request came in from an entity that none of us really liked from some, you know. I don't want to throw out names, but you know, if, if an entity came in that we would all agree, we don't want this person on, on town page. And they said, hey, the town rec page has been promoting all these leagues, we want them to promote, to put this thing about this meeting we're having. That's my concern.
That, and that's my concern of having a policy because you know, the, the, there has to be some uniformity, you know, and, and there's we, we, especially in, in today's climate, we have to be very careful on how we deal with that.
And so, so I'm hoping I can talk to Adam about it. There may be some ways of, so for instance, the recreation department. What if we specifically said, we had a disclaimer and we said, the only things we're posting are things in this category? Recreational activities for people in and around Townsend. That would severely limit the chances that we're going to get some entity that, you know, has, we would have a problem with.
See, I, I think though, the recreation department should only be doing government. When they start posting about Townsend youth soccer or whatever. I think it takes away from their website, so I prefer that we don't allow that.
Well, what about the library? Or the, I, I mean.
So what was the example of the library? What would they post?
Well, I think any, any kind of nonprofit thing that was happening that, that, you know, they, they were doing a lot of posting about, you know. Book signings or, I mean, there's, there's.
But those that are at the library, you know, but. Not necessarily. Sometimes they're at other places. Or there could be a concert that's at a different place or a robotics competition or that's at a different place that they might. I can see where they would have a concern.
And so rather than going forward with what we have written or trying to alter myself, I thought that I would just take some of Adam's time during his next hour, office hours. And ask him if he's dealt with these sort of issues in other municipalities and whether he had some advice about are there ways that we could, by limiting the scope of things that they post? Narrow our kind of exposure or liability and then, then we can come back and kind of discuss, the board can discuss whether or not that's something they want to do.
I, I think though, that if we have a selectmen page or select board page. The policy that you have in place would be, and I do think we need one, kind of like the news on the website or whatever. You know, something that we could place the proclamation that we just did today on Facebook. We could have a page that, that's a more restrictive page.
And I, I agree that I think that for, for the vast majority of the town departments. For things like the water department, or things like the board of selectmen, things that we're doing in town hall. The, the, the policy will probably work fine. It is for those departments to have a little bit more outward facing and more interaction with the nonprofit community. That I think that they're, they're given a little bit of pushback on the restrictions that the policy would have and.
And, and that's the whole reason why we need this. It, it is not the individual departments that should be dictating policy, it is the board of selectmen. We need to put it in that context, but the fact is, is that i- if something is posted, what they feel is correct, it, it, you know, where is the, where is the control? There is no control at this, at this juncture. So if, if there was a problem, let's say, you know, one of the departments posted something that, that was not appropriate. Who is the, the party responsible for it? The town? Who is running the town? The executive board of the town is the board of selectmen. That's my concern. And I, I understand how, you know, how and why they, you know, they, they may feel in regards to that. But I am very concerned about what is going out to the public. That is, is, is town business. Town business has to be, especially in this climate right now, we have to be very careful about what we put out. And people believe that whatever is on Facebook is indeed the fact, so we have to be careful.
That's true. You know, so I, I thought that that the best course of action would be to have a conversation with town council during office hours and see if he had some ideas to, to try and put to effect. and see if he had some ideas to, to try and put to effect our policy. Is there a way for us to limit our exposure and liability to, to the things that we don't wanna be done, but still have control over?
Mm-hmm.
What gets, what gets put out of it.
I'll tell you, I don't wanna give up anything, I don't, I feel that our policy should say that it's, you know, approved through the board and this government only, and, and kind of that, I wouldn't I, I'm not trying to take away from the library and the senior center or whatever, but I just think, um, by giving that, that leeway, you're just sliding down a slippery slope and it's better to cut it off.
I, I agree too, and I, I also extend it to other, the other departments that would be the police and the fire, we have to be very careful on what we put out in that respect too. What, um, it's not a control thing, it's, it's a matter of liability for the town, what gets put out by those departments as well is equally as important.
Sure.
And that's something that I've, I've wanted to talk to you about in regards to bringing it to, to Adam and make sure that whatever is posted that is quote-unquote official police or official fire, it has been vetted by someone, whether it be town council or town administrator.
So I, I, I.
Check with Adam and see, because I don't feel as strong, I understand the point about, you know, we don't wanna wind up in the Boston flag situation.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, so, the Facebook page is so far, the news that for, I can talk about longer, for sure.
And so I, I do, I do, I do, I understand exactly where the board is coming from, and one of the reasons why I wanted to put together this policy was out of those exact concerns. I, and I also don't wanna hamstring the department heads from doing the work that they feel like they need to do, but I also do things that's important to have, kind of limits and restrictions on what gets put out to the public, at least some, some supervise, supervision.
Right, and that's, that's all I'm saying, they are able to put out what they continue to put out, I'm saying that there needs to be some checks and balances. And maybe it needs to, to be run by somebody that is making sure that all the communications coming out of town hall and any entity in town hall is appropriate, that's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to hamstring them at all, I'm just saying that there needs to be some sort of checks and balances.
I agree. And so I, I would like to report back on the fifth act of meeting with Adam on the twenty eighth.
Okay, so let's put the um, social media policy discussion up, maybe I'll make it a discussion.
Yes, yes, yeah. It might be a lot.
July five, okay. Um, so moving on to uh, four nine, reviewing the shared streets and spaces report. Um, this is due uh, to Maston on the thirtieth of June. Uh, we met last week Friday to go over first, you, you know, the first, the words and all, this is, so you all have this. This is the closeout, um, uh, the questions that they asked, funny old questions, and we worked on first nineteen, twenty of them, we have to answer twenty-one through twenty-eight. We have, if you look at the budget, um, currently we have spent a hundred forty-six thousand three hundred eighteen dollars and seventy cents out of a hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-one that we were awarded. There are some things that are not in here yet, um, the uh, cost for installation of the, all of the bike um, things, they aren't up yet, the signs along the bike lanes, highway department and cemetery parks are putting things in, uh, not in here is the installation of the you are here signs that they did just over the weekend. The two that we have, the third one isn't in yet. Um, it, uh, manufacturer found an error in it, and they've sent it back to reprint. So it's gonna be late getting here, but that's still me, so we still have, we figure probably ten thousand dollars money for plants and the uh, soil for the planters that we put in today. So I did send Maston today a, a letter asking, uh, we are gonna be in the twenty thousand range below budget overall. We're wondering if we could use the additional monies as follows, uh, can we purchase additional planters? We ordered only four out of ten. It would be nice to have the other six, two more next to the one of Mr. Mike's, and then four more around the curving there at railroad and, um.
Harbor Church.
Um, well, we weren't putting any in Harbor Church, we were putting at railroad and depot, should we put in Harbor Church, where?
Where, where it turns out towards the street.
Okay, we can talk about it, okay, so I, it, it isn't, we don't have a picture of that, so anyway, we can buy more planters, we had only bought four because to stay in budget on that line item, we had wanted ten for depot and railroad.
Yes.
And along Mr. Mike's, so the people aren't cutting the corner there. You know, coming in and going around that planter to go into the, it's dangerous for bicyclists that are coming up that road, or people that are walking. And so, and, and that's why the, the stop sign on Depot Street, at railroad now. It's because it's dangerous for bikers and walkers. So we can buy those, we can also order picnic tables um, to place in various locations, in particular the town common, because they're off. And um, we were asked by Roger if those could be replaced with some of the extra fund.
Mm-hmm.
And can we redirect any money toward related items, like the sidewalk to connect the two sections of the rail trail? And the answer that I just went back this evening, and thanks for the update, all of those options are eligible for extending the remaining funding. Let us know what the town decides and when the anticipated date of completion is, and we can approve the revised scope and extension. So um, Emmy and Joan and I are the three from the committee that have been finishing everything up. Eric, if you wanna meet with us sometime very soon, like before the end of the week.
This week, we should probably sit down.
It might be good, um, so that we can get that into them on this report, our plan is to finish the report on Monday morning. And we will be in progress.
But I do wanna say that you guys have done a bang-up job on this, um, and I was out on the rail trail this weekend, and there was, despite the, the, the coolness of everything, there was a lot of people out there, and there's consistently a lot of people out there, and, and I just feel that this is one of the, the many things that have been happening, that's, that's very positive for our town. Uh, I personally am looking forward to the, the next phase, which is going from the harbor to uh, uh, to Groton. When that gets all completed, because that'll, that'll have from end to end uh, a really great um, recreational type thing for, for the town. Uh, but I wanna thank everybody that's worked on that. It's, it's a great thing for everybody.
There were about nine of us to start with, and it's just sort of, you know, dwindled down over time. But we still have a committee.
We still have a committee.
Does the one from Pepperell attach them to Groton as well?
There's talk of it, I think they're looking for grant money and all of that, but the, the thought is to put them all together.
Right, so then you'd have three.
And then, and actually to go up to New Hampshire and then all the way back down again, so.
Okay. Well, that would be another.
The only question I had is with um, the uh, town administrator here, is the correct contact person still in?
The contact was Emmy, Emmy did all our permitting for Maston. Um, and uh, she, we also have um, uh, Jim Cragger on here way back when, um, but the contact person for the project on the ground was Adam.
Okay.
So, uh, and she is still on contact. We have done an enormous amount of.
Yes, well, all of you guys.
Has, has Joan Lawford.
Yes.
So.
Joan's continued good work, I mean, there's a lot of good things happening.
Yeah. All right, so that's the report, um, I just wanted to review it with you before, we're gonna send it in, we're gonna finish it on Monday, it's due on the third.
Try that.
Um, and, yeah, that would probably be a good idea. So you should be able to hear me if we all unmute it.
Hold on, I'll, I'll check that right now.
Can you hear me, Hartley?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so if we each connected to Zoom, we would have our part of the meeting um, being recorded, anything that we've talked about so far wouldn't be, so are you on Zoom?
I have a log in.
Who's selectmen's meeting room, oh, that's that, okay.
I, I, I can use the other cameras in here, and we can use your, your Zoom as the audio resource. It won't be perfect, but.
Oh, we'll get feedback.
If we all.
For all, yeah.
All right, well, we'll try it.
And continue on, okay.
Ronnie, Ronnie Ollie, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Dave.
You look and sound fine now, if the owl cooperates and comes back up, then yes, you'll get feedback and you'd have to mute your computer again.
But I'm talking about if each of us in here is on um, Zoom, we'll have feedback back amongst us.
Correct.
Yeah, we could mute our mics when we're not talking.
Yes.
All right. So um, go ahead and log in.
Okay, we'll try it that way then.
Okay. All right, so Eric, would you like to continue?
Sure. Sure, so um, Comcast agreement requires that Comcast have a drop in, in town hall, which is why Comcast is requiring a letter from the town authorizing the removal of that drop. I'm not in favor of it.
Not.
But I, there, I do have a request from the president of T-CAM.
Um, I think we should, I guess my question is, do they have a drop there?
They do, my understanding, again, I'm not, I'm not as up to date on the, on that.
On that.
As, as that, is that, the reason why they would be moving is they would be moving the drop from here.
We have two drops, according to the contract with Comcast, one is here, and one is at the high school, I thought. It, it's not there anymore, it was at the old high school.
And I think we're supposed to have five. With the option of like three more.
Then why don't, maybe what we need to do is meet with T-CAM and talk to Comcast, and find out where we can, I'd like to keep the drop here, I'm not in favor of um, removing this drop.
Uh, I, I wasn't either, but I wanted to make sure that I touched base with the board because. I wasn't either, but I wanted to make sure that I touched base with the board because I did get that request. So I can send back a response to TCAM asking them to come back. I think that's the owl.
It is the owl.
The owl's up.
Now you can mute your station.
Horror movie from 50s. So I can send back an email.
I could have muted.
I can send back an email to.
It's not me.
Your keyboard, yes. There you go.
Is that better?
All right, so go ahead.
So I can send an email back to TKM asking them to meet with the board and have a discussion with Comcast about.
There, there, yes, because what that, what that request is saying is that they're taking, they want to take this out of here and put it over in Main Street. Number one, this is our equipment. So we're not going to allow them to take our equipment and move it over to that station number one. Number two is that this is not fully digital. This is analog system. So the, the new drop that they're going to install over there is not going to be compatible to our equipment that we have here. That's number two. Number three is there is a lot of future expansion. Number one is we need to make some moves in here that we were going to absorb. If they're going to be taking it upon themselves to do that, then we need to sit down and talk with them to say, this is the, the expectations of both the town and, and TCAM. We need to iron that out.
I agree. So I will send out a response to the president and ask him to, we're going to arrange a time for him to come and meet with the board.
We'll begin the conversation. And I would like to know what the timeline is for what needs to be done there and what needs to be done here. And also who's paying for what? Because we did set aside some ARPA funds for within the snow area. And while we're talking about that, about what is entailed with moving Hartley downstairs so that we can have a desk for talent up here.
Right. And, and my, the equipment that's in here is our equipment. So we technically can move him downstairs without a problem. But I want to be sensitive to TCAM and what their plans are because according to the agreement that we have with Comcast, Comcast, I, I think the reason why TCAM is going directly to you to get a letter from us is because our agreement is with Comcast. It's the town in Comcast. It's not TCAM. So it, it's.
What Comcast is very clear with TCAM about is that they're.
What they're asking for is completely outside the bounds of what we're contracted for. So, you know, I'm not for it at all, period.
Okay, well, I can certainly communicate that. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we need a plan because yeah, there's a lot of work that needs to be done and we want to be, we want to be proactive and help them. But we also don't want to lose our signal.
Bill, so I think we all need to get on the same page and figure out what everybody's.
Yep.
Playing this, where, how we're going to get to the end goals of the town in TCAM and what are the intermediate steps.
Yeah, because we did, we lost the high school and that was, that was our channel eight.
That was the supply.
Yeah, it was, they demolished the building and then we realized, okay, there goes our studio and there goes our, our demarcation point. So we definitely need to figure that out.
The 2015 contract with Comcast has a series of drops, video drops that were contemplated in that contract. And so it's just, I think, been going from the bunch that were contemplated there to zero effectively could be a good idea.
Yeah, we have to, we have to make sure that we plan it out so that A, we can keep the, the channel on the air, but, but there, there's other things that are involved in it that bolted down and in everybody, we all need to be aware of that.
I also have a concern about what if something happens in that building and we lose that.
Right. Right now, there's no redundancy bills into the system.
But this is what I, I know I have been working with Comcast to make sure it, there's, there's a, there's a lot of stuff in the background that a lot of people don't know that we're talking with Comcast about. And part of it is, it doesn't necessarily need to be a drop that's, that's wired up, but there's drops that need to be made per that agreement so that in the future, when we do expand, we just need to make those connections and it's already there. So I don't want to get Comcast all.
I agree. And so I, I, I think based on my reading of the documents Comcast is very clear with TCAM that like, that's between you and the town. We're not going to do anything until the town tells us that it's okay. So I'll reach out to TCAM. Whether we need to speak to him.
That's good.
The second thing is municipal hearing officer position.
Yes.
I believe that probably needs to be an appointment. I'd like to want us to touch base with the board about it. Ross was, was the municipal hearing officer. It's not something that we've taken care of.
Ross was not municipal hearing officer. The municipal hearing officer is John Barrett.
Yes.
And we appointed him not this past March, April timeframe, but across. And I'm not sure if the appointment was for a year or longer, but I'm not, I have to look at my minutes to tell you. Or my notes, probably more than minutes.
I don't think there was a timeline.
I don't think there was a timeline on it, but I'm not saying. So have you talked to John Barrett?
No.
Okay. So right now it's John Barrett.
And so if that's, if it's the will of the board to keep it the way it is, I'm perfectly fine with that. I just wanted to make sure that there's.
It used to be that it was Jim Pratt.
Yes.
And Jim Pratt was offered not to do it in March of time. And John stepped forward. So I'm okay with moving it back to the town administrator. I think there was a training that had to take, if I remember correctly.
I think it was a webinar.
It was like a couple hours.
I'm very familiar with 4U. I've done.
So talk to John and let us know what.
And that's, again, I'm not, if, if the board is comfortable with it remaining with John and he's comfortable with it, I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to, now that we have a permanent TA, I just wanted to touch.
I would rather have it be you personally. That's my opinion.
All right, I will reach out to John.
Talk to John and see.
So the, the third thing is it was brought to my attention that right now we have some uncollectible bills, medical bills due to the fire department EMS. And this is not, I would not be requesting a, anything from the board at this time. But I did want to let you know that there are some of these that are clearly uncollectible permanently as the, the individuals are deceased, who receive the services. And so it's very unlikely that we can collect things. But some of them are potentially collectible. I know that there is an ambulance hardship policy that the board has about people being able to, if they have a hardship for ambulance services, for future ambulance services, requesting an abatement of that.
Keep going. Do you, when you want me to jump in, let me know.
And so I was just going to do some investigations as to what other municipalities have done with these sorts of bills and, and bring back a menu of possibilities to you and the fire chief.
Okay, so let me just, my understanding, and I haven't talked to the current fire chief about this, but I, my understanding is that there is a billing system that is you, or a billing agency that is used, yes, by the fire department to collect those bills. So I guess I want to know the status on these uncollectible bills. Why not?
Twenty different codes as to why they're leaving them uncollectible from vendor.
And so I guess I want to know from the vendor how proactive they've been. I understand if the person is deceased that you're, you know, but I, I want the vendor, an explanation from the vendor on why they are not aggressively working on that unless they already have, which they may have.
And so I can get that information.
And I thought the other policy was under the fire department. No, ambulance hardship policy. Here it is. Nah, EMS. Okay, so there is, have you read the ambulance hardship?
So I, I can reach out to the vendor or have the police chief give me the contact to the vendor to reach out and find out what steps, what their process was to reach this point.
And who fills out, who sends this form, oh boy, to the uncollected individual? Who sends this out? Cause I, I'm working here. The Townsend Fire EMS chief will make the final decision. We address the cases of financial hardship on an individual basis. Us, the board of Selectmen. How many do you have there? Are we talking two or are we talking thirty?
Two hundred and twenty-three calls.
Uncollectible.
Again, there's a huge chunk of them are, well, huge chunk. Chunks these. So let me do some, some.
So the form is available on the Townsend Fire Department website or can be requested by calling coastal ambulance billing.
That's absolutely our.
That's our vendor. The fire chief makes the final decision on whether to waive the charges, reduce the charges, establish a payment plan or deny the request, not us. Number four.
So it sounds like what I should do is get some more information from the vendor so we can figure out what, what has been done. And if they haven't, we haven't proactively provided individuals that they can get in contact with us with that form, we can discuss doing so.
If approved for modification, a copy of all will be made and it will be held in the ambulance service files for a period of seven years. The original form, you've probably read this, will be submitted to the billing company authorizing changes to the patient's charges. Coastal ambulance billing will notify the patient in writing as to the final disposition of the hardship waiver. But the board of Selectmen doesn't make the, we can, we need to say, address it. And once we say address it, it's the fire chief. Sorry, but that's what this says.
No, I agree.
And that's what I understood. I didn't, this first one, I thought we weren't involved at all, that it automatically happened. That's what I understood from a year ago.
So my, so I, I will get some more information from the vendor to try and figure out because I, I, my understanding is that these are ones that the vendor has already done their due diligence and trying to pursue and they've reached that point where they say, these are calls that we're not, we're not getting.
Have they sent this form? I, it looks to me like our job, the board of Selectmen is just to say, yeah, send out the hardship form and then it's up to them to, to to, it's up to the patient to request the financial hardship form. And then it's up to the fire chief to say.
Do, would we want to have the community services person be involved in it?
This was not, the community services person was hired to do the ARPA related stuff. This was, right now, no. My answer to that is no.
Just throwing it out there.
So I can certainly, I can certainly.
This would take all her time.
And yes, this is, there's a large amount of them. I do think we need to get some more back from the vendor to make sure.
It, it seems to me that coastal ambulance should be doing a lot of this to, you know, to get the paperwork in.
Last thing, I, I do know that the, the board has already made a ruling on this, but this, this, it did come in and so there was a member of the, the town accountant sent a, a letter to the board requesting an extension of extra hours for a member of the account staff to roll over more vacation time.
I read that letter and it said for one week and that's what's allowed through.
One additional week is what she meant. And I checked on the, the hours and that is the hours. The individual has. And so I, I understand that I'm just doing that as a formality with the board now. They never request to give in, but I do believe the board has already spoken on this. So unless there's a.
It's 10 hours, right? I, I know it's a small amount of time, but it's a, a union employee. And then I, I'm in a, I, we already did.
I believe the board's already spoken.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The answer, we already have the answer.
Okay.
And that was it.
All right. So moving on, any elected board's liaison report?
I do not know.
No?
And I already gave one.
And you already did yours. Announcements and communications. There were several things that were in the sharepoint. Should I pop them up here?
I have two that I could read if you want them to. One is from Cemetery and Parks to the board of Selectmen.
Oh, is this a memo of understanding?
No, this is to, in regards to the interim town administrator.
Okay, go ahead.
Dated May 25th, 2022, the Cemetery and Parks Department would like to take the, this opportunity to thank the interim town administrator, administrator Ross Perry for assistance he has given the department this past year. Ross was able to provide guidance and assistance to the department in a variety of groundskeeping and budgetary issues. The department wishes Ross all the best in his retirement and, and are looking forward to working with a new town administrator. You know, signed by the commissioners.
Okay, excellent.
I also have a public hearing notice that was in there from the historic district commission. You want me to read that?
Yeah, the date and the, yes.
There's a public hearing notice in ordinance in accordance with MGL chapter 40C. The, the historic district commission will hold an in-person public hearing on July 6th, 2022 in the great hall at Townsend Town Hall at 4:00 PM regarding an application for a certificate of appropriateness for a fence installation at the property located at 80 Main Street Townsend, Mass. Parcel ID 34-4-0.
Okay, thank you. And I think we also received the letters of reappointment for the finance committee.
Yes.
And a memo of understanding from Cemetery and Parks for the mowing of the town buildings other than Town Hall.
Correct.
Okay. And that's all I had.
Yeah, there was.
I thought there was one from John Barrett about the Model T.
Oh, there is.
I think I have there about the Model T, small T Ford birthday party and car show.
Yes, that will close the street for.
Do you want to read the announcement? Do you have the announcement up?
Yeah, I do. I'm just going to make it bigger.
I'm just going to say, if you can read that.
Okay, so I just want to announce that there's going to be an antique and classic car show and birthday bash Saturday, June 25th, 10:00 AM to 1:30 on the Townsend Common Brookline Street. Yankee into T's, Model T Ford and Antique Car Club celebrates its 40th birthday on Townsend Common with the car show and a birthday party. Come see original Model Ts and Model A Fours with other early American and classic cars and hot rods. At 10:00 AM, those will leave Townsend Ford in a parade down Main Street. Route 119 to Route 13, the antique classic cars will park on Brooklyn Street near the congressional church. Brooklyn Street will be closed from 10:00 AM to 2:00. See the cars and enjoy them and learn about the veteran vehicles, some of which are 100 years old. Kids will be able to sit in the car and watch the hot rod. All are welcome.
So, and that, that is again, a non. So and that, that is again a nonprofit and so we can't put that up on the website. Otherwise we would, even though we had to approve the road closure.
Yeah.
So. So yeah, so that's going on to Saturday. That's all I have then for announcements and communications, correct?
Yes.
All right. So moving on, our next meeting is July 5th. That's a regular meeting. We do have the audit committee meeting, joined with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee on Thursday to see the FY 21 audit. And is there a motion to review and sign payroll, payables payable warrants out of session?
I'll make a motion that we review and sign payroll and bills payable warrant out of session.
All this in favor?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Justice Brandon, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. And with that, we're going to adjourn to executive session. So make a motion to adjourn to executive session and and to adjourn the meeting from there.
Make a motion that we adjourn to executive session pursuant to General Order 30A 21A2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations and union personnel. And we'll adjourn from executive session.
Thank you. All this in favor?
Teresa Moss, I.
And Veronica Kell, I. All right. Thank you very much. We are adjourned from the regular session at 8:38. Yeah, and we are entering executive session. So I don't think we need the owl, do we?
No, the owl's not working.
Okay, so I'm going to.
No, it hasn't been. I just.
All right. Thank you. Good night.